Okay, yeah, yeah. Good with it.
Cool.
You, it's ten thirty recordings in process, so.
Yes, I'm there.
And I'll be at the.
Everything is okay for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the policy meeting is one o'clock, right?
I'll be at that. Could be that.
Yeah.
Recycling or whatever.
Yes. Let's go here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. It's ten thirty.
Okay, very rise please. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner Cannon Malasa is going to lead us in prayer today.
Uh, everyone please bow your heads. Uh, our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
Okay, you be seated. Okay, our next public workshop is next Tuesday, August first, twenty twenty-three, right here in this building at ten AM.
I'm sorry, that's my fault. That's.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is August. We've already had that.
Yeah.
Next public workshop is Tuesday, August eighth here in this room at ten AM. And the next regular meeting will be Wednesday, August ninth at ten thirty uh here in in the same conference room. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco. Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three and accept and approve the video recording of the July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three Commissioners' Regular Meeting as the official meeting minutes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number two to approve the bills.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number three to transfer monies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number four to approve additional appropriations.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Item number five to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Sir Malloy.
Yes.
Item number six to receive the amended certificate of the County Budget Commission number fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number seven to authorize a member of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to sign, countersign on behalf of the Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, the contracts per list dated August second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, contracts create twenty-three training opportunities and nine job opportunities at the cost of two hundred four thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-six cents. This is fully funded through Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act allocations with no county general revenue funds requested.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eight to concur with the Trumbull County Planning Commission Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and execute a resolution of support for West Warren Development Application to the Rural Industrial Park Loan Program for the development of the area located in Southwest Warren, commonly referred to as West Lawn. I'll read a little of this, whereas the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County, Ohio, is supportive of the development and submission of a rural industrial park loan program application in accordance with section one-one, excuse me, one-two-two-point-two-four of the Ohio Revise Code to promote economic development in eligible rural areas and promote the economic welfare of Trumbull County and the state of Ohio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine to amend the personnel action taken by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on July sixth, twenty twenty-three, recorded in Journal Volume one-five-six, page two-five-eight-three-eight, for the employment of Mr. Robert Perry for the position of custodian with the Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department. This amendment is necessary to correct the pay range from three zero years, fourteen dollars and ten cents, to a pay range three, three years, which is sixteen dollars and twenty-six cents. This is due to the employee's prior Trumbull County time of three point three six one years.
Make a motion to approve.
Um, second that motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number ten to approve the personnel action for the employment transfer of Mr. Robert Perry from the position of custodian, pay range three, three years, sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents, to the position of laborer, pay range three, three years, sixteen dollars and sixty-seven cents with the Trumbull County Engineers Department. This is effective Thursday, August third, twenty twenty-three, and pursuant to the authorized job posting, uh, July seventeenth through the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number eleven to approve change order number two with Pollard Land Services Incorporated. Uh, this is for the heat and shoot sanitary improvement project number five S thirteen in amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand, forty dollars, eleven cents. This revises the total contract value to two million, eight hundred ninety-four thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. The change order consists of the following, one hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents is for twenty-eight additional service connections requested by vacant property owners and existing business. The property owners are aware they will be subject to the monthly capital charge that will be used to retire the long-term debt. Uh, two thousand, two hundred three dollars and five cents is for the repair of an unmarked water service connection that was damaged by the contractor through no fault of the contractor. Uh, seventeen thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars is an increase in the cost to restore the Weathersfield Township roadways within the project area due to damage caused by heavy equipment during the course of the project. The original bid amount for this item was three hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars, uh, and only included asphalt patch and chip and seal repairs. After discussing with Weathersfield Township officials, it was determined that a two-inch ODOT intermediate asphalt overlay with tack would be a more effective repair to the damaged roadways. The cost to make this much more effective restoration is three hundred fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-three dollars, resulting in an increase of seventeen thousand, uh, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. Uh, the time, uh, of substantial completion will be extended, an additional sixty calendar days from August fifth, twenty twenty-three to October fourth, twenty twenty-three, at no additional cost to the county.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, in discussion, I just want to make a comment with this. Uh, I want to commend Gary in the Sanitary Engineers Office, uh, for being foresighted on this one and thinking long-term down the road. Not only is it going to provide service for twenty-eight additional future connections, um, but the original way they were just going to patch the road in the center of the road, um, wouldn't have looked professional. It was approved that way to do it that way. And Gary came up with a plan for very minimal cost to go ahead and, um, asphalt the whole road so it'll look professional. You won't even be able to see where the, uh, the work was done. So I want to thank him and his department for thinking ahead with that and working with Weathersfield, um, to make sure this job not only is done correctly, but it looks very professional with, uh, the little added touch he did to it. And my.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number twelve to approve a school resource officer agreement by and between the Trumbull County Commissioners, Trumbull County Sheriff Paul Monroe and the Bloomfield Mesopotamia, excuse me, Local School District Board of Education for police protection and services for Bloomfield Mespo local schools, its buildings and activity of the school, its personnel and students for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four academic year, uh, that's July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The Bloomfield, uh, Local School District Board of Education agrees to pay the Trumbull County Sheriff's Department the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, due and payable at the end of the term of the contract.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number thirteen to authorize the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners Clerk to advertise for sealed bids for the twenty twenty-two Bridge Rehabilitation Program. The project consists of the purchase of the steel for superstructures for the Brookfield Number Two-B, uh, Brockway Sharon Road, Orangeville Village Number Two, Hayes, Orangeville Road, and the Warren Number Twelve, um, Kibler Toot Road Bridges. No general funds are required. This project is partially funded by an Ohio Public Works Commission grant obtained through Eastgate Regional Council of Governments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fourteen to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the twenty twenty-five Ohio Department of Transportation Application Certificate for the Ohio Department of Transportation, uh, twenty twenty-five fifty-three-ten grant application contingent on the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing the application prior to submission.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number fifteen to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the twenty twenty-five Ohio Department of Transportation Office Authorizing Resolution for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty-five fifty-three-ten grant application contingent on the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing the authorizing resolution prior to submission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Um, item number sixteen to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to sign the twenty twenty-five Ohio Department of Transportation Office Local Match Certification for the Ohio Department of Transportation, twenty twenty-five fifty-three-ten grant application contingent on the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, including the President of the Board reviewing the local match certification prior to submission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes. And next is to enter a new executive session pursuant to R C one-two-one dot two-two G three for a conference with an attorney for the Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the public body that is a subject of pending or imminent court action.
I'll second it.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Okay, we'll return back shortly.
Yes, yes, the cameras are recording, yes. I'm not sure. I'm not. I'm sorry. No, no. Yeah, everybody's temperature is different. Yeah, everybody's temperature is different. Oh, yes. Thank you, they're comfortable, oh, they're probably one of my daughters, they're so old. They're very similar, they're similar, yes, probably, they probably left them and didn't want them, so. Oh, yes, I do have two daughters, so my oldest daughter is a nurse in Cleveland, and my youngest daughter's a nurse practitioner in Kentucky, so they both then have. You're so sweet, thank you, so, thank you so much. I'll take comfortable shoes anytime, yes, when you, like, what shoes I wear here, if I go for a walk, I change them often because I go tripping down the sidewalk or not see. No, it's not good for you. Just get, sometimes they say that, how do you call it, tend, latest, like, which has to do with your ears, like, your balance has, yeah, to do with your ears or something, but. You just get to a point where you're like, I'm not gonna do this anymore, it's too painful. Oh, thank you so much, I don't like saying hello to you, thank you, I hope you have a great day. Thank you, thank you so much. I, I love people. But, um, yeah, but I, I don't, um, two children. Oh, that's nice. Thanks for saying hi, thank you. You need me? Okay.
Didn't kind of clear it out? You know, we make that, or we have to get Paula.
I'll make a motion to reconvene from executive session pursuant to RC 121.22 G3 for a conference with an attorney for the Board of Commissioners concerning disputes involving the public body that are subject of pending or imminent court action.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes. Yeah, that conducts our regularly scheduled agenda item and items. We'll open it up to the floor for anyone that has any comments or things for the greater good of Turnbull County. Also, we'd say also, when you are called on to do so, please make sure you state your name and where you're from, we're starting Mr. Peg, he had his hand up here first, I'm sorry.
Township trustee. Basically, I'm here today to apologize to attorneys Danzo and Toth in that the information that I had was incorrect, that they had returned the request on the wind and solar farms within two weeks. So, again, my sincere apologies if they felt like I downplayed their department, I did not intend for that, and, uh, hey, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, and.
Thank you very much for that.
And as you, as you were made aware today, Mr. Peg, we're forwarding that, I have yet to send it, well, it's going to be out here to sign, but I gave a copy of it to you, request for opinion for Bayona Township, so hopefully we can get some answers from that bill, that'll be forthcoming. On, you know, potential restrictions there, so we can get some legal advice on that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Shavers?
Hello, Gwen Shavers, Braceville Community Foundation, I just wanted to know if there was an update on the ARPA funds?
Well, what we can tell you this time is, based on our meeting we had last Tuesday, we had to put a halt on our funds as we do a deep audit of, of our funds, we've been working with Auditor Yoder, we are going to have some more hard, concrete numbers at Tuesday's public workshop. And then, once we see exactly where we're with that, we hope to get the wheels back in motion to continue forward. Your request was already run by the attorney and approved, so it just needs to be for some action from the board, but right now, we had to halt all of them while we did a re-inventory of where we are funds was. So, you're, as the wheels get moving forward, you'll be one of the first ones to be addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And while I'm up here, I just want to say that coming to the meetings have been very informative for us, for me, and I really appreciate the hard work that the county employees do. I can tell that this is just not an eight-hour job, this is a 24/7, if something happens, people have to come out and take care of it. So, your maintenance man, the binbo, wait, Gary, Ben, is his name Binbo, Mr.?
Newbro, newbro.
I forgot.
Yeah.
But anyway, I thought he has to know every street and sewer in the city, and, you know, I just want, I appreciate the hard work that people do. Your lovely clerk here and all the people, so I just want you to know that some people see this and they really appreciate it, I'm, I for one do, thank you.
And we appreciate having you here too, and you've been a, a great constituent here and have been involved for months now with us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else from the floor have anything for the greater good? Hey, look, we had a very good meeting yesterday, very good workshop yesterday, I think we took care of a lot of stuff yesterday, we were well-prepared, I want to thank Auditor Yoder, yesterday, she, she is right on the money when it comes with the transfers and appropriations, and I've learned an awful lot the last couple of meetings by your involvement in the meetings, and I know that's, it's nice for the public to see you so involved with your staff to make sure that every penny is accounted for, and in your way of doing business, I think is very refreshing for a lot of the employees and stuff too, to see that, that you're handling your job so seriously, so I want to thank you for that, Martha. Um, anybody else from the floor? Okay, anybody on the phone lines? Hit star six and unmute yourself. Star six and unmute yourself if you would, please.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes, please state your name.
Okay, it's Amanda Abarre from Warren, Ohio, I'm just kind of wondering where we are with a land purchase or agreement to get the new building for the pound. When I left yesterday, there were thirty-one dogs in a twenty-four kennel facility, the dogs are stressed, the people are stressed, so where are we at with that?
So, the Board of Commissioners has recently gotten a, an opinion, as you know, that has been shared with Animal Welfare League's attorney, which will be brought to their board, so that's where we are, the, the board has, is, would like, wanted to see our legal opinion as to what we asked our attorneys, what we can and can't do, what's permissible, what's not. As you know, there, there were certain stipulations in there that they talked about, about their land, we had some questions on ours, whether it be a donation, whether it be, you know, we, we leased for, which is more, which is more possible for a government entity. Uh, that legal opinion has been turned over to, because the board has waived privilege, has been turned over to Mr. Letson, the attorney for the Animal Welfare League, who's going to in turn take it over to their board. Again, that, I, I think what's been discussed and what's been sort of hammered out, albeit not legally yet, but, but just in public meetings, we're nearing consensus here. So, you know, that, that piece of land out there by Animal Welfare League is very, would, after going to look at it and, and surveying everything, and it's perfect, it's perfect, not only from a cooperation standpoint, that we can share services and we can do different programs together, but it's perfect from a, from a geographic standpoint, it's perfect from an infrastructure standpoint, and Animal Welfare League willing to work with us on a price, which would be, hopefully, you know, very favorable to the county in the long run, makes it all that more appealing, so we're going to continue to do that, their board has not reached back out to us just yet, but I expect that, or them or their attorney to reach back out and talk about the, the legal opinion that I supplied them, that we supplied them.
Okay, so it's in their hands right now.
It's in their hands right now, yes. Without getting into the legal, too much of the legal, but that's, that's where it's at, so things are moving along, thank you, Amanda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I guess with that too, Ma, I'd like to just say too, with our public meetings that we have on Tuesdays, I want to reassure the community also, we have most all of our department heads have been attending those things, and it's been very refreshing to hear the ideas they have, the cooperation, and to see the team that we have assembled of department heads throughout the county. Uh, we've made a lot of good strides lately, you know, there's, there's bumps and bruises when it comes to the media here and there, but the progress we're making on so many different things, we had a new nine-one-run director started two days ago, she started with her feet hitting the ground, running, we're, we're still working towards working with the Health Department to get them a new facility, the dog pound, we've got a, a potential location for a nine-one-one, we're going to put a new building, or a new roof on the engineer's building, we're going to fix the planning commission building, there, there's so many things going on in the county that people don't see day in and day out, and, and like Ms. Shavers said there, it's a 24/7 job for almost every employee here, we just got through the fair, that was fantastic for the city. We just got through the fair. That was fantastic for the citizens of the county, went off without a hitch. And, and I, and I look forward to, to, uh, working with officials again in the future on Mosquito Lake region. You know, we're getting complaints daily about the weeds in Mosquito Lake and, and that's something that we're going to have to address as a community. Uh, not anything the Board of Commissioners can do to fix that overnight. Uh, but we can work with other entities to make sure that we all work as a community towards solving that issue to make boating and recreating better for everybody. Same with the water quality, the health of the water. Um, people are alerted sometimes by E. coli alerts and stuff that the state does. And, and you'll get that on different lakes, different seasons, when you don't have rain for a long period, which we, we went, you know, weeks without rain until the rains recently hit and, and solution to pollution is dilution. So that's gonna cure some of the problems there. But every day it's something different. I could tell you sitting here as a commissioner, the, the range of phone calls that we get in our office every day is so broad and there's so many different moving parts to it. And it's really nice to, to see how the community reacts when we call on department heads, we call on employees to do their job. We never know what's going to come up next and, but we need to be prepared for that. And we'll take it on as a community, as a team moving forward with that. In regards again, uh, just to make a quick comment, like, you know, we got beat up a little bit over ARP stuff last week. Some of the media was great. Some of the media was just mistaken and, uh, that they weren't in the meetings. They heard from one media source and another and, and maybe heard from one source and didn't see it with their own eyes. You know, there is no money missing. There's no money missing anywhere. Every single penny of the ARP money we had has been appropriated and voted on at this podium up here. And, and they've all been great projects. And as Commissioner Cantal Mesa said last week, every project that comes in is a great project. And we have projects that I wish, I wish personally, we had a hundred and fifty million instead of thirty-eight million to spend because there are worthy projects out there worthy of that. And we're going to work as a community again, as a Board of Commissioners, as we get our sales tax money in, your hard-earned money that you spend here in the county and that people spend here, put it to wise use and we're going to keep growing. We're going to keep improving. We're going to keep making the, the standard of living better in this county for all citizens. From good roads to good sewers to good water, um, to recreational opportunities and, and we're gonna, we're gonna work every day for the citizens to do that. And, um, our phone lines are always open, you know, so it's, it's easy for people to criticize or read a social media post or, or to, um, spread rumors and gossip. But if they attend these meetings, I think as, as Ms. Shavers said earlier, alluded to, um, they're welcome to, you know, township trustees, you're welcome to. Phil Pega, commend you for coming to every meeting. Go back, you, you're working for your community by attending every meeting here and reporting back to your people in Vienna. And it's open door policy for any trustee to be involved with what we do. And, and also at the same time, if they want one of the commissioners to attend their meetings, you know, we're open to that. Commissioner Cannon-Malice and myself go to many trustees meetings, Rotary Club meetings, COG meetings. There's meetings throughout the county. That's what you're paying us to do is to go get educated so we can share that information to make Trumbull County better and represent you. So that's my little soapbox thing with that is just a
Commissioner, well said, well said.
Just to reassure the people that, that the glass is half, more than half full, uh, most all the time with, with what we do.
So, uh, agreed. And I, I still think that there's this, and it bothers me because there's this narrative out there that somehow there's, there's mismanagement or misspending. I mean, these are the facts at the end of the day, and I want Raymond to listen to this because I already texted you this, but you didn't put it in, unfortunately. At the end of the day, the sales tax is up, uh, in, in Trumbull County. We're, we're very healthy financially. Our borrowing power right now is better than it's been in twenty years. The ARP money, we're able to fund a lot of projects that are going to help communities. You know, we, we are able to make these capital improvements. We've made millions and millions of dollars in capital improvements to roofs, to HVAC systems, to, to all this. So this, this narrative that, that somehow we have the lowest sales tax rate, one of the lowest sales tax rates in the state. And we're able to provide these, these, these services efficiently and effectively to our citizens every day without getting in their wallets and without getting in their bank accounts, not asking for a dime more in my eight years, not a dime more. Um, and that should be the narrative out there. I mean, we have a lot of good things going on, as Commissioner Malloy said, and financially, we haven't been in a place like this in ten years in this county. So, uh, as I mentioned, the sales tax figures are up, we're able to borrow dollars for, for capital improvements. You know, it's a, it's a good time and it's an exciting time for Trumbull County. We see a lot of development and, and this narrative that, that somehow there's this lack of, uh, controls or, or mismanagement is, is promulgated by rumors and hearsay for people that aren't at our workshops to see what actually goes on, on a day-to-day basis in this county. And if you are at the workshops and you're not reporting it, then shame on, uh, because you do see it. So, um, it, it kind of frustrates me in some way that you pick up the paper and you read some of this stuff. And it, it, you know, when, when people say, well, you should have had a, uh, a fund for, for all these different projects that you had, you're not taking into account a lot of things that happened over the past ten years. We lost our local government fund. Our interest rates on our investments was down. A lot of things hit local governments. Uh, the sales tax numbers were at, at an all-time low at some of those years. We were barely able to open the doors at, at those times. So now that we have these funds and now that we have this infusion of state and federal monies, we're able to do a lot of these projects. We should be celebrating that. I, I don't know where this whole idea of mismanagement or, or misspending is coming from, but it has to stop because it's not true.
And that's something too, I learned more through our, our investment meeting that we had last week that you and I both attended with this, with our treasurer. You know, what people don't realize, we have over two hundred and ten million dollars in the bank that we don't, we don't touch. We haven't touched that money. That money keeps getting added on and added on. That's not, those are investments that we have. That's our safety net for if we ever need it for something. Two hundred and ten million dollars. That's pretty healthy. And comparatively with other counties, we're at the top of the game with that.
And that doesn't happen without financial controls and financial responsibility by the Board of Commissioners. And this narrative that it doesn't happen, that it's somehow not happening, I'm tired of it. It's just not true. Report on the facts.
That, that and the rubber stamping thing. Now, if you come to our meetings on Tuesday, as many of you do, we go over things, we prepare. So when we come up here and Mauro says, I make a motion and I say second, quick. It isn't because we're trying to whip out of this meeting quickly because we got other things to do. It's because we're already prepared for it. Preparation, provide us the opportunity to do that. So that is something that I'm proud of. And I'm, I'm so proud when I walk into meetings on Tuesday and there's twenty-seven people sitting in the chairs waiting for us to get here to be involved, to roll their sleeves up and say, let's tackle these issues. Let's work out the bugs. Let's educate you on what you need to know. So when we come up here and I say yes, or Mauro says yes, we're saying it because we've already done the research. Contrary to what some things will report or some, some people will report, it's the preparation that makes things look so smooth. Look at the meeting we just had today. This meeting today was flawless. Boom, 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 boom. You're out the door at a reasonable time. We took care of the county business. I've got a meeting this afternoon that's very important with Planning Commission. Mauro has a meeting that's very important with, uh, Trumbull Solid Waste and, and we're going to go do our job. We're going to go to work, roll up our sleeves and do more work today. As we get through this meeting, not quickly, because it was quickly, but efficiently because we were prepared. So that's the narrative, I guess, too, that I'd like to portray that, 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 uh, it takes a lot of work for this and it takes a community. As a community with you, we're all going to move ahead forward. We're gonna, we're gonna be a shining light of Trumbull County very, very soon. There's good things happening and good things coming every single day and it's only going to get better. So.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, Roger.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Thank you all.